No, no, probably not. But there's other few that were probably... Good evening. Let me call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District. Present today, we have Board members Rosemary Breedlove, Mr. David Oliveira, Mr. Dino Espazza, Mr. Eduardo Campirano, Ms. Dolce Zimmerman is running late, and Dr. Robert has a medical emergency this evening. We also have Dr. Julia Ursia present.
I have an announcement.
Yes, I would like to recognize Dr. Jose Martin, who will make this introduction.
There, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam President, good evening. I want to express my thanks for this opportunity to recognize a person who has served our institution and our students long and well, and has served as an example of dedication and professionalism to all of us, as well as a mentor to myself. That person is Mr. Victor Furo, Assistant Vice President for Academic Affairs for Operation. Mr. Furo will be retiring at the end of this month. What we call it, the stop-out at the end of this month. Mr. Furo came to our institution from Leonia School Districts in New Jersey in 1984. His first position with our institution was as Vocational Supervisor, T-shirt Training for Texas Southmost College. In 1986, he was the Industrial Education Department Chairperson, T-shirt Trainer. In 1989, he became the Acting Dean of Occupational and Technical Education Division, and eventually was, became the Administrative Assistant for Instruction for Texas Southmost College. Mr. Furo earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in Industrial Arts from Montclair State College in 1960, and his Master of Science in Occupational Education from Corpus Christi State University in 1990. Mr. Furo's knowledge of the budgets, his ability to provide legitimate but creative solutions to the vexing problems that often arise in trying to manage our budgets, his thing about the fishes and the breads and all of that, and his tactful understanding of the equations of many account managers, has made him a very valuable contributor to the mission of our university. It is not possible to recount all of his deeds, but because of his experience and understanding of our academic culture and history, everybody, deans, chairs, and directors consider him fundamental to their success. He constantly seeks new and innovative ways to succeed what we do. Mr. Furo is respected for his integrity during hard times and courage to deal with tough issues openly while tactfully. He's also admired for his ability to work with everybody, internal and external constituencies, and his dedication to the institution. Mr. Furo will be missed by all, most of all by me, and we wish him well as he starts his new adventure in the new world. As I say, we refer also to students as stop-outs, and that's what he is. He's going to stop out for a while from academics to do a different kinds of academics, an assistant basketball coach, but it's part of a development leap really, so that when we have a basketball team here, in a year or two, he can come back and strengthen our... And maybe he'll bring us a couple of players with him. We are all going to have a celebration tomorrow, his honor, at the third floor of Sebby at 2:00 P.M., and it will be a pleasure for all of us to share this time with him. Once again, thank you for everything, Mr. Furo.
It's very hard to do this. It's not any easier standing up here and doing it, but it's time for me to move on. It's time for somebody with a new, fresh perspective to take this position. Hector? It's been my pleasure, okay, and I mean this sincerely, it's been my pleasure, okay, to be, to have played a small part in TSC and in the partnership. It's been my privilege to work with a great group of staff and faculty, and three Vice Presidents, Philip Kendall, Ray Rodriguez, and last but not least, Jose Martin, who have taught me a lot, and I appreciate that. And I would like to thank Dr. Garcia for having given me the opportunity to be able to do these things and work for our students and the community. And I want to thank the board. It's been a pleasure also, working with the finest boards, past and present, that have the best interest of the community and the students in mind at all times. And I thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. The board would now convene into executive session as provided by Chapter 551 of the The board is now back in the regular session.
We go to item number two on the agenda, and we have a contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown via Phase Two Unit 1F at a purchase price of $53,000.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we execute the contract for the purchase of 15... One? 115?
1F, is it?
Yeah, whatever.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Dino Espazza. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? None, motion carries. The next item is the purchase of, of the Fort Brown via Phase Two Unit 15F for the price of $53,500. Ask for motion to approve, contract and resolution.
So, move?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Dino Espazza, seconded by Ms. Rosemary Breedlove. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. And the final item in the list of state agenda is the purchase of the rear one-half of Lot Five, Block Seven, but this addition to Brownsville at the price of $25,000.
Move, Mr. Chairman, that we purchase that tract of land.
Motion made by Mr. Campirano, seconded by Ms. Breedlove. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Item number three now is approval of the minutes of September the 14th. I ask that you look at the minutes, and then I'll ask for motion to approve. Motion made by Mr. Oliveira, seconded by Ms. Breedlove. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Item four, speakers to agenda items, we have Mr. Fernando Ruiz, who's gonna...
Yes, sir.
...leave you to address for two minutes.
Can I speak now? Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Fernando Ruiz, and I live here in Brownsville, Texas. I've lived here all my life. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The reason I am here today is because I was watching television the other day, and I saw that the Secret Service arrested a seven-year-old child because she had placed a threat on the Internet against President Bush. And the reason that I'm here is because I'm sure that that is against the law. But it is not against the law to criticize in a respectful manner or to discuss the political situation of our government in this time of crisis, in these times of lies and deceit. I have been reading the papers, trying to see where here in Brownsville has academia participated, inputs concerning the war in Iraq, the conduct of the President, the conduct of the Senate, and the Congress. What is happening here? I participated in a political forum the other day here at the university, and there was this person speaking, I will not mention it, but then there was input from the public, and I was very impressed to learn that there was somebody besides me that really loves his country and the community and the philosophy of this great country of ours. I addressed him after the meeting, and I says, "Sir, what are your credentials?" He says, "Sir, I have a doctorate degree in government, and I have two master's degrees." So I said to myself, "I'm not speaking with a flim." And I asked him, "Why are you not teaching at this university? I think you would be a great asset to the development of students that we need here to be able to think critically and to participate in the process at every level of government." He says, "I was fired by the administration because the policy of the President of this university is that I may not speak against the President." And I am here to say...
Mr. Ruiz, let me, let me stop you right now.
Yes, sir.
Our policy dictates that you could address the board on issues that are on the agenda.
No, sir. Yes, I... Excuse me, sir. I asked the question. I asked the question, sir, before I came here. I got here at 4:00, sir, and I went to the office of this young lady here, and I asked, "Ms. Hernandez, would you sit into my right?" I said, "I do not wish to discuss items on the agenda, sir. If you will see my request, I will see that I am addressing policy of the university." Now, sir, please, this is not right. You're trying to stop me. And you know what? You're not stopping me. You're going to stop this university from growing and enriching the minds of students and the critical thinking that is required to be able to proceed in this competitive life. Now, if you want quality students, you have to have quality teachers, sir. And you know, if I remember correctly, because I worked with one of the biggest unions in Mexico City, the teachers' union, and in Mexico, the universities are autonomous. Are you familiar with the term? A teacher. You have to have and listen to both sides of the story, Mr. Gonzalez, not just one side. In order to make a right call, you have to be familiar with the processes and the cultures of other countries and their policies. Then we can say, "We have good students here at this university." Because why? We have criticism, and that's, sir, should not be taken offensive. Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Ruiz, we have the best students on our campus, and we have the best professors on our...
Sir, that's your thing, and I'm entitled to mine.
I understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Ruiz.
I'm, I'm addressing an issue. You're completely out of balance. The issue was, what I told you, is the policy of the President, sir. That's what I'm issuing.
Thank you, sir, Professor and Board, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
And don't remember, sir, we, the people, we are the government. You're just a politician sitting there.
Thank you very much.
That's why this town never progresses.
Okay, we now move to the next item on the agenda, and that is the '06 Budget Amendments for '05 and '06. We have Ms. Melba Sanchez for Dr. Morgan.
I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome someone back to Texas Southmost College and University of Texas at Brownsville. Melba Sanchez, as you know, was the comptroller here several months ago, and she's back. Melba is a graduate of the University of Texas at Austin and has a Master's in Professional Accounting from the same. She's a licensed CPA. She worked with SBC in St. Louis and in San Antonio, and she previously worked here for three years. And she's been up the valley for a few months and decided that she would come back. Before, before I finish introducing Melba, I want to take this opportunity to thank Nancy and Rosa in the accounting office who did double duty and, and served us very well for the last eight months. And so Nancy, I want to thank you personally and... And Melba still lives in Harlingen. We haven't made her move to Brownsville yet, with her husband David and their son David Nicholas. And you will see in a minute that the family is going to expand shortly.
Thank you all very much. Thank you very much for providing me the opportunity to return. I am delighted to be here and can honestly say it feels good to be home. Never thought of, of work to be home, but the, I have come to appreciate the warmth of the friendships that I've made here and just the, the sense of belonging to an organization that really cares about this community. I too would like to thank Nancy, Rosa, and Julie for holding up the fort, weirdly, and managing the finances of this institution and just continuing on without someone in place for the last eight months. I look forward to continuing to work with each of you and, and bringing this university and this college to the next level. Budget amendments?
Right, to work. Included in your packets are, for consideration and possible action, our budget amendments for the fiscal year 2005 through 2006, Budget Amendment 06013 for the general fund, 06014 for the auxiliary fund, 06015, and 06016 for the campus facilities funds, represent adjustments to actual fiscal year and activities. These budget amendments do require a motion to approve. And I'll, I'll take any questions you might have on those as well.
Is this a motion item, or is it...
Yes, it is. Yes.
Budget amendments.
We'll do all of them at the same time?
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Breedlove, second by Mrs. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome home.
Welcome home. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I be excused?
Yes, you may. Come down. Thank you, sir. Item number six, Bond Projects, we have the schematic designs for the Center for Early Childhood Studies, and I'll ask Ms. Felix Mendez, our VP of Construction, to address us.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, and President Garcia. We are pleased to present this evening two projects for schematic design. Following the participation model that was adopted by the Board of Trustees when the construction process began, all of the bond projects are developed by the various stakeholders through the campus advisory committees, and then reviewed by the board bond advisory committees, and ultimately by the Board of Trustees. The schematic design phase is the first phase of the construction document development, and it ultimately, that it will be ultimately used by the contractors to build the facilities. Therefore, the exterior elevations are rough in nature and will continue to be developed as the projects mature. A critical component of the schematic design is the develop, is the site development. Even though the sites have been selected for each one of the projects, the projects as designed needed to be tested out in each site to be sure that we had the correct access and the appropriate vistas to each project. Another important element of this process is the, to incorporate the program that was developed by each of the campus advisory committees for each facility into a full plan where functional needs could be verified. At this stage, we also confirm the budget. We had brothers and associates and the contractors do an estimate to affirm that the project can be, can be realized with the budget that has been allocated. So we've done all of that. The designs have the benefit of many reviews from the campus stakeholders. The involvement of brothers and associates and their various experts has also shaped the management of the project. We are confident that in what you are about to see, the, the development is in accordance to the guidelines of the master plan, and we seek your approval tonight to continue to the next step of design and construction development, and construction document development. First, we'll see the Center for Early Childhood Studies, a project that is currently under design by Wells Janossek. Wells Janossek Architects is based in Dallas, Texas, a small firm specializing in the design of creative and nurturing environments for children and family. Together, Mike Wells and Larry Janossek have worked on over 75 projects and accumulated over 30 years of experience. Mike Wells, who is, will be presenting this evening, and is the principal in charge of the project, and Larry Janossek is the project manager, who's also joining us here tonight. Without further ado, I present Mr. Mike Wells to give us the schematic design.
Thank you, Veronica, and welcome, and thank you for having me here tonight. It's a great pleasure to be here to present this work as it's developing forward. One of the things that we've come to learn is we, we focused primarily initially in the, in understanding and making sure that the facility would, would accommodate the program that was envisioned by the university and what you need for this facility to accomplish as it goes forward. When we came to work on our new site on the peninsula, we found that there may be some other significance to that site in addition to its development for the, for the nurturing of and education of young children. And as that site develops for the university in the future, the master plan calls for that to be mostly residential in nature. And so our facility needs to blend with that and make, make a good neighbor to that type of development. But also then, our, our building will become the first building in that, in that area, and will set a precedent there. And so the significance of our building took on some new meaning. We need to make sure that this facility then establishes a good precedent, establishes a benchmark, if you will, for the future development of the peninsula in a residential manner, and what's could be more appropriate for children than this residential setting. So we're thrilled with it, actually. We think it's a wonderful adjustment for, for the site to become more of a residential in nature, that's a more nurturing for children, and we feel like it's a perfect match for our facility to be in that area. So when we began to look for precedents and how do we establish what this benchmark might be, we began to, with the committee and President Garcia, we began to work very, look backwards a little bit in a historical context into some of the early residential structures that were here in this area in, in the valley around the turn of the century. And those, if I can get the right one, those references we found at Fort Brown and Fort Ringgold in the residential structures that were erected on the fort for officers' quarters, for enlisted quarters, and, and other residential structures on the campus. The photographs are pretty grainy, so I don't know if you can really see too much from them in this historical context, other than that there's a lot of men standing on this roof for some reason. We, we know they're using pretty good wood, that's not necessarily what you would find at the Home Depot. But what, what's wonderful about it is, is the residential nature. It's, it's a residential context. There's deep porches, large windows, high windows with clear story, daylighting, residential building materials in brick and siding, and some really delightful wood detailing along the front edge of the porch, which we found to be just wonderfully refreshing and different and, and unique in nature, and something that we felt like was a, a good basis for what we're trying to accomplish here. So we were delighted to have this as, as a good, solid basis for us and for the future in developing a benchmark on the island. And you can, you can see, again, the photographs are not real clear, but the information is there if you really look at it. There's a series of windows, in this case, looking at this building, there is a high clear-story window that brings daylight into the building. There are a series of low windows here between the porch roof and, and the, the building roof, which add another layer of daylight in the facility, and then there's this wonderful deep porch which carries across the front of the building. And that is so residential in character, very, very appropriate, and is in, in complete agreement with the latest trends and, and best practices in early childhood facilities. So we're just delighted with this reference, and we think it, it is a wonderful match for what we do, and we feel like there's enough depth to this context that it can inform the rest of the development in the peninsula for years to come. Very pleased with that. Again, more settings, and, and another thing you'll notice are the large trees, and those may take some time, but we'll, we'll get started on that as soon as we can. And, and then some other things we think are interesting in this same collection and this same archive, for instance, this old steamer. What a, what a great piece of transportation from the past that we feel like we can bring into some of our play areas on the exterior, perhaps. Our site is situated between University Boulevard and the Resaca, so we're right on the water, and literally right up against the water, and you'll see that in, in the site plan. And so we have some nautical opportunities to call on, and we think that context with some of these old steamers, and here's an old sailboat, that offers some wonderful further opportunities for us to develop a historical context that's appropriate. And finally, there's this old headquarters building, which is showing some of the brick detailing that you find here on campus in, in the morgue building and some of the other buildings, and that's an, an additional depth to this context that we feel like we can call on to create this environment. So those are, those, the main kind of historical documents that we're using to kind of inform the design as we go forward, and we're presenting today some, some of that for your review. This is the landscape master plan. You see, University Boulevard is on the bottom of the sheet, and the Resaca, which is actually to the, to the north, from, I mean, to the, that north is down and to the right, so this is to the south. And the benefit for us there, again, in a, in a happy circumstance of the sighting, is that southeasterly breezes will come across the water, be very cooling for children in the summertime, and it's an excellent sighting for that, so we're real pleased with that. There's a lot, what we've done in organizing the site, we've got vehicular traffic on University Boulevard, this is where our parents will come in, there's a parking area, temporary parking area, as well as a drop-off area, so we can accommodate both types of, of traffic. We have the, the residential buildings arrayed across the, the back of the property facing the Resaca, so that every classroom has a view of the Resaca. Every classroom has an opportunity to go directly outside and be in a play area that's bounded by the water and the trees on one side, and the deep porches of the, of the residential buildings on the, on the other side. And then there are some more structured play areas in this area of the site, and then the administrative building and functions of, of that nature occur in this entrance building to the front of the site. And a little bit of a blow-up detail from that site plan, you can start to see this kind of structured play area here, and a more free-flowing and more natural environment across the back of the property that connects all of the individual classroom buildings. And each one of these is, is similar, and yet we've, we've separated them so that they can be unique and detailed in a way that's... unique and detailed in a way that's unique to that particular classroom, so that a child can begin to develop a relationship with their particular space and identity and their building that's different from the others, and add some character and depth to those buildings, so that they're not just cookie-cutter buildings, but they have a unique identity and a color scheme and some detailing of their own. And there's a little detail of that area along the Resaca, we're showing some extension into the water to take advantage of that Resaca, and brings a different viewpoint for the children, so they can get out and look back at the side. We think that's an opportunity, an educational opportunity, and I'm sure the turtles and the storks will all appreciate that very much. In a floor plan arrangement, then, there are four sets of two classrooms, so each one has direct access to the back, to the Resaca side, and great views along the Resaca. And the difference is that this classroom on the far left has the large meeting room, which will take a full class of students and observation of the children, and the other classroom buildings have a smaller group, accommodate a smaller group of students. But all of those, each classroom then has an observation room where activities of the children can be observed by the students. So that was the primary educational goal. Then we have inside the building, offices, administrative areas, a reception area as you come in to the entry of the building, administrative functions and files and storage, and the kind of things that are needed there. This is an art room. This is a multipurpose room, which would be also where food is served, director's office, and other educational offices arrayed along the front. Get a little bit more detail of that. And then a blow-up detail of the classroom arrangement. This one's showing the large classroom, this one's showing the small observation area, smaller observation area. Each classroom then has an entrance off of this covered area. There's, for instance, you can see the detail on the right side, that is a workstation for the teacher. There's toilet facilities that are shared between the two classrooms, storage for the children's materials, clothing, and articles of that nature. And then a direct access to the back, which has the deep, again, the deep-covered porch, so we have the deep covering on shade on both front and back. These ceilings would be fairly high with daylighting coming in, lots of sunlight, and that is what we feel like is the most important aspect of those rooms. Those classrooms are going to be well-lit, there's lots of daylight, and that's important in the development, the healthy development of children. From the university's side, from the university Boulevard elevation, this is the view, this building is the administration portion of the building. Again, the deep porches, residential scale, it's a brick facade, although it's difficult to tell in this PowerPoint presentation. Primarily a brick facade, windows with shutters, peaked area at the entrance to provide protection from the elements, the liquid sunshine. And then you can start to see some of the classroom buildings behind. They're a little taller because we want that high ceiling and the volume, and we want the daylighting in those spaces. The whole elevation is very small here at the bottom, so you can see it. This is the first classroom building at the back, so you can see the four classroom buildings behind with the administration building in the front. And then a blow-up detail at an early stage of development of the classroom building itself, and starting to see some of that detailing that we saw in the photographs coming in to give the building some character. I think it's a unique expression, I'm just delighted to find that reference in those And that's the presentation. I would like now to introduce Donnie Zimmerman, trustee, who will complete our presentation.
Mr. Chair, the board, bond advisory committee for the Center for Early Childhood Studies met on Monday, October the 2nd, to review the schematic design and discuss the content. The meeting was well-attended with members of the faculty, staff, and community members. Also in attendance was our fearless leader, Mr. Chester Gonzalez. Ms. Mendez updated the committee with the process that was followed to develop the schematic design. She discussed the involvement of the campus advisory committee as they were instrumental in the development of the plans. The committee discussed program elements and designed the facility. Dr. Carl Stockton, dean of the School of Education, gave preview of plans for the new Center for Early Childhood Studies. There it is. Like the Star of. Basically, the new center will provide scientific, research-based instruction in programs for preschool children ages three to five. The emphasis will be on developing pre-academic skills such as reading, language acquisition, cognitive and social skills for preschool children at a time when their minds are sponges. They are incredible, they have an incredible capacity for learning. The center will also provide quality field-based training sites for university students pursuing elementary teachers, our presentation, in early childhood education. The new center will serve one hundred and sixty children ages three to five. The Raul J. Garrett Early Childhood Center will continue to serve infants and their two-year-olds, their two-year-olds. By utilizing both centers, the university will be able to triple the number of children served to about two-hundred-and-thirty. The Center for Early Childhood Studies will hire certified teachers to complete the four-year bachelor's degree program in education. The Center for Early Childhood Center will receive accreditation from the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the nation's leading organization of early childhood professionals, just like the Raul J. Garrett Center recently received. ADA funding will be received from the state to help cover the cost of the center, including the hiring of certified teachers. The committee is very confident that this facility will meet the needs of our early childhood program and is keeping in mind with our master plan. With that said, I move to approve the schematic design for the Center for Early Childhood Studies as presented.
Thank you, most commended Zimmerman. Second, the motion.
Second, my Mr. Passon, on the table.
Hi.
Of both, not what she cares.
What a wonderful time to be a three-year-old.
Interesting project.
I, for fear of interrupting the meeting too much, and I know everybody's under time constraints, but this is a marvelous project. Mr. Wells and Mr. Janossek have been extremely creative architects working with us, and we appreciate sincerely both of you. Would you please stand so that you can both get credit for this? They have designed what you would want your children to go if you could design it yourself, cottages that provide state-of-the-art training, efficiency, stimulation, comfort, all of the things that you would want your own babies to have. And they've done it in a way that reaches back, as they've said, to our own history. And I hope, one of the things that was said was that this sets the precedent for the rest of the peninsula. So it was a particularly important project for us to decide on, finally, how it would end up looking, because we believe that then the dormitories that we build in the future will have some of the same characteristics of the buildings that you see in this project. The playgrounds, I mean, there's still so much to do, there's still so many surprises that are going to come from all of this. But I know we're in wonderful hands to proceed forward, and we thank you for the confidence that you've had and the help that you've given us, the staff, the faculty, the director of the programs, Dr. Stockton, who has led, first led us in the accreditation of our Raul J. Garrett Child Care Center, and now will be leading us in the same accreditation process for this one. At this point, we believe we're the only ones in the valley with that prestigious accreditation for a childcare center. So we will be modeling not only good childcare for the students of our, for the children of our students and faculty and staff, but will also be providing a wonderful venue for observation and learning for the teachers that are in our early childhood program and in our teacher prep program. So it just couldn't be, we're very pleased, and we know we won't be disappointed at the end of this, so thank you for.
Well, the question that is not only to be fortunate to be a three-year-old and go to that school would be the teacher. Are you going to have people pounding on the door and trying to be in that school to teach? Because it is just a dream, it would be a dream to be able to teach in that school. Oh, you have to love the two, three, and four, and five levels, which I do. It's a challenge, it's just.
It's going to be, it's going to be lastly.
Wonderful project.
Yeah.
Now to another great project, a music education facility that is under design by Studio Red. Studio Red is an architectural firm that has been open for two years. The staff has grown from ten people, which worked together for a number of years at another firm, to twenty-eight people today. Pete Garrett has been working on theater projects since the early eighties. He's the architect in charge for this project. And his first project was the Wortham Theater in Houston. Since then, he has worked in thirty-six theaters and has established a theme that specializes in theater design. Studio Red Architects has also has experience in commercial projects around the country, including entertainment parks, such as Moody Gardens, Disney, and Universal Studios. Pete Garrett, like I said, is the principal in charge, but he couldn't make it today. He was talking to Houston. But Jared Wood, who is the project manager, was here doing some reviews, so he will be making the presentation for you this evening. Jared?
Well, I definitely don't speak as eloquent as Pete, and, but I'll go ahead and tell you all what we always have to tell everybody, and he gives me a hard time about, I'm thirty-two years old, and I'll be thirty-three next week, so, anyway, I'll get started on the project. The exciting part of this project is the area that we're in. We are in a transitional area, that's the fine arcs area, it's between the Jacob Brown and the existing historic district. It's created a lot of exciting things, but it's also made, had a few challenges along with it. And if you can see up here on the building, just to give, up on the board, to give you a little bit of orientation, the street that's along the top side, the north side, is International Boulevard, and the one along the left side is University Boulevard. And we wanted to make sure that no matter which direction you came from, you felt a place and a sense of arrival to get to this building. We felt that it was going to be a new jewel on the campus with a prominent location and just an exciting sight, but we didn't have a back door. And for a theater, that's a little bit of a challenge, because there's loading docks and things you don't really want to see. Well, we talked and met with the faculty and everyone, and we decided that when we sat down, that really the shape of this building is round, and we wanted all the, an entry from both university and from international. And so what we've started to do is spiral the design out with views back onto the Resaca, and all of that, so we could really make this building exciting, prominent piece on this campus. And if you notice, this will be a drop-off area to the left of the building, and we will also have more of a pedestrian entrance on the right side of the building. We've also been thinking about the site a lot, and how, what would you do in the future? We wanted to make sure that in the future, we'd be, that more spaces would be able to grow, new buildings would be able to be added, and we've also started thinking about parking areas. And in the yellow areas are more of the future buildings that would be closer to the building, and the areas up at the top, and some of these areas that have a red line around them, could possibly be, if needed, parking garages. Just to start bringing you into the building and explain the floor plan a little bit, it all, the idea has really come from the nautilus shape, and spiraling around and making the different chambers in a nautilus are rehearsal rooms, and, so, we have an eight-hundred-seat theater, these, this is the seating area here, with a one-hundred-foot-wide by forty-foot-deep theater, theater or stage, I'm sorry. You would enter the, you would enter the audience chamber on either side of a control booth and make your way down into this intimate space for learning and also for performances. Surrounding the space are teaching studios. There are three teaching studios for music rehearsal and band rehearsal, and what, one of the challenges is, is these spaces change from event, or different kinds of musical groups would be performing and using this space, so acoustics have been a very important part. And to do that, the exciting part about the nautilus shape is it starts giving you spaces that aren't square, and the rooms, the walls are not parallel, and all of these items really help to make the spaces acoustically the way that you want them to be for performances and for learning. This area along the south side is the lobby. This entire space is the lobby with glass, all of this is glass, and the areas outside has large overhangs, so for gathering before an event, for people wanting to be outside and looking back onto the Resaca with great views. This is the second-floor balcony area. You would come up a grand stair and have a balcony that would overlook the lobby space. And off of that, you would have areas that, restrooms and a gathering space for events before a, before a theater performance with an outdoor balcony. And also, this area could be used for teaching, if you needed an extra classroom. All of these back spaces that you see are the second, are the first-level upper volumes, so that for acoustical purposes, you need large volumes for the different spaces, and it's also where we will place all of the mechanical rooms. These are images that a few of the board members and the president have seen. It's a theater in Houston, Texas, the Kincaid Theater, and this was a project that Pete Garrett and myself worked on a few years ago, and it really just, it got everyone on the board, I say the board, everyone, and the B-Back Committee and the team excited just how intimate the space feels, and it just started to give us a direction on how we thought we could go forward, and the intimacy and the feeling of the theater. So the first, this slide on the bottom is from the stage looking back into the audience with the balcony. Five-hundred-and-fifty seats on the first floor and two-hundred-and-fifty seats on the upper floor. This, this image is of, is of sitting in a box seat, looking back into the theater. This is a three-dimensional view of our building, which really lets you see how the spaces and the volume has really come and formed from the nautilus shape and the organic feel of how the theater and the chambers could work. We're very, we're just very excited about the plan and how the, how all of the rooms and everything work together to form this building. These are some very preliminary views of the exterior of the building. I know they're very sketchy, but we're in the process now of working with everyone to try and bring the feel and the organic shape of the nautilus into the exterior and the details of the, of the building. This is actually a view of, from Gorgas. This is kind of what you would see if you were standing at Gorgas, looking back at the This is a view from University and Taylor Avenue, looking back at the building. And you can start to see how the spiraling starts working on the roof and coming up and spiraling around the theater. So I would just like to turn this over to Mr. Chester Gonzalez to speak on behalf of the B-Back.
Can I hear him, sir?
Can I, because, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Ingress and egress, I mean, when you got, we were talking about an eight-hundred-seat auditorium, right?
Yes.
And I was at the, when we went to see the world, I can't, I don't remember, what kind of doors did they have? Were they like double, triple doors, or?
Yes, on the first floor, we'll have double doors that go into the theater, into sound light locks, and then you will go up steps that go, and then another set of double door, or two sets of double doors to go into the back of the theater. Then you will work your way down into the seating area here.
Okay, this is my question, officer. It really is not so much ingress, when everybody's exiting the theater after a show, how many exits are there going to be?
There are those that are in the back, whatever, that we were just talking about. This is the balcony level, there's exiting. There's exiting here, and there's also exiting through the boxes and in the stairs on this level.
There's six hundred on the bottom level, right?
Right. Let me go back to that slide. There is exiting here through these doors, exiting from the su-
Are those double doors?
Yes, double doors. And then there's also exiting through each side-
How many exits are there? Are there three exits right there?
There's, there's actually four.
Show us where those are.
There's these exits here. That's, that's one. And, oh, there's actually two there with double doors, and then a set of double doors here, and a set of double doors here. Then there's also a set of double doors here to get out, and another set down here.
Yeah, that's six hundred people.
It's, it's five-hundred-and-fifty people, yes.
Five-hundred-and-fifty.
My fellow board member here gets a little claustrophobic.
Yeah, no, 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 I didn't.
I understand.
This is, it's beautiful, it's the only thing I have when we're coming out of, of a performance anywhere. And where in the world you go, that's the only thing I have, I wanna get out. And, and then if there's a fire, if there's an emergency, you always wanna be able to get out. I wanna know the door that I get out of.
I understand.
And, so, double doors are how wide?
Uh, the double doors are six feet wide. So there's, there's a pair of doors, there's, each one's three feet wide, each door is three feet wide.
What are those doors there? Are those?
That's six feet wide.
Okay, so it's, so you have four of those pairs.
Yeah, we have, yes, we have two at the, at the front, and then, then one set of each of those on either side.
And, and so, the ones on the side will be close to the seating area there, that they could-
Yes, yes.
So we'll, we'll reserve two for Miss Bree, but, if she can exit.
I got me any, it's just a, this is a beautiful-
It's an important issue.
This is so gorgeous, but that is, we've been through, I've been in lots of different places, and I like it, I wanna have lots of little exits to go up with that, and then-
Yeah, I, I remember that had pretty good access, and it seemed like it was, it would probably empty fairly quickly.
Yes.
Now, at, that front, that glass enclosed area, there'll be, that, that would be where you could sell, uh, alcohol, or whatever you wanted.
We actually have, we actually have a concession stand, right here.
And by the way.
We do have a concession stand, that you could sell food, drinks, whatever you would like here.
Okay.
And we have, also have front-of-house and, front-of-house restrooms and back-of-house restrooms.
Where's the restroom?
Oversized.
And you have a ticket booth.
How many stuff holds it?
You have dressing, you have the green room.
Yes, we have dressing rooms and back-of-house restrooms here.
And the green room?
We have a green room also.
And the green room is usually the place, as you know, that, where the performers can gather before, um, a performance and have some quiet space. The second floor, as was said earlier, also has that room, uh, that was pointed out to accommodate perhaps something like, uh, the, um, the First Nighters or Patreons, uh, and, and it has a balcony. The balcony would be overlooking this, uh, the old Gorgas, uh, this old Gorgas, uh, this building. And so, it's, they're being, they've been very sensitive to views from, from, from the lobby. The lobby's also expected to be used as an art exhibit space, because we don't have any place right now on campus that is secure for, for, um, for visiting art exhibits. So they're planning, uh, they would be planning that, um, as well.
Wasn't me.
I'm gonna go ahead and read, uh, thank you very much, I'm gonna read Dr. Robles's report. Uh, again, Dr. Robles had a mental emergency tonight, but if there's one person who's very enthusiastic about this project, it's Dr. Robles, and, and the B-Back Committee, uh, also, so, if I may, have your mic, please. The Board Bon Advisory Committee for the Music Education Building met on Wednesday, October eleventh, to review the schematic design. The meeting was well, was also well-attended. President were representatives from the UTPTC faculty, staff, and students, as well as committee members. Ms. Mary Comendis reported on the process followed to develop the schematic design. She mentioned that the Music Campus Advisory Committee had committed many hours in the development of the design. The members of the committee, Advisory Committee, uh, traveled to Houston to tour the Kincaid School Theater, the model for our own project, to be better prepared to comment on the proposed design. As you can see from the presentation, our students are going to have an excellent facility to rehearse and study music. Dr. Suzanne Urbish, Chair of the Fine Arts Department, reported on the automatic use of the facility. She stated that the rehearsal halls will provide appropriate rehearsal space for concert bands, wind ensembles, jazz bands, master choral, university choir, symphony orchestra, and string orchestra. In addition, the teaching studios will also provide suitable acoustics and design for all applied lessons, section rehearsals, and duets, trios, and quartets. The concert hall will provide a quality music education performance venue for our students with a stage large enough for music and ensembles, including the Bravo Opera Company, Mardi Atchis Corpion, university choir, master choral, Real Bravo Wind Symphony, and concert band, one o'clock and two o'clock jazz bands, the guitar ensembles, the symphony, symphony orchestra, and the string orchestra, and the Real Bravo brass concerts. The facility will serve as community outreach and recruitment tool, as the Fine Arts Department intends to, uh, intends to host all of the UIL competitions for the Lower Valley. Students from the local school districts generally travel to Donna or UT Pan Am for UIL competitions, because there are no facilities, uh, adequate for major competition in Brownsville with surrounding communities. In these competitions, there are usually approximately eight thousand high school students and middle school students performing. All of them highly qualified students that meet the stiff UIL requirements. In addition, the music department plans to host festivals and campuses for the community. Committee has a great vision for the facility, and since we can't, and since we cannot wait to begin construction, Dr. Robles and I move to approve the schematic design for the Music Education Building as presented. Taken by Mr. Veda, I'll favor.
Aye.
I'll oppose, none, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Urbish. Dr. Robles, can you address the board? I know that this is a crowning moment for you. Can you please address the board?
We need to talk about my program.
And if you want us to hire back any professors, you're welcome to.
That's on a leather list. Prov-, where's Provost? He knows. Well, actually, before I do that, I want to tell you how much this means to our students and the community and the faculty. This is a very courageous decision on the part of the board. This is a life-changing facility, and it is just so powerful, I can't tell you enough. And the kind of, of confidence that you have in the caliber of our students and the quality of the program and the outreach to the community is, is just unbelievably powerful. Want to thank you for this opportunity, and it is going to be the finest facility. I'm going to say "in the south" because nobody's gonna have this view. And, anyway, thank you so much. This is just an incredible, incredible, credible building. Thank you.
May I say something?
I, Dr. Urbish, only because we have incredible faculty like you that are so enthusiastic. How can we not? This is, this is so exciting for us, but to hear your enthusiasm, we appreciate that, we all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bree Love.
The word is already out on this facility. Where's our architect? And so, uh, it's, it's amazing how this, this picture has spread from computer to computer, from email to email. And so the community is already waiting for the opening night festivities. And Dr. Urbish told me, um, that, she says, "You, you haven't seen a celebration like the one in your lifetime, like the one we're going to have that night." So, uh, we, uh, yes, so, proceed. And thank you as well. We've had, uh, Studio Red Architects, and we, again, we, we're very, very fortunate, this, uh, this go-round in our building projects, to have folks who, who are expert in those kind of facilities that we've hired them to, to, to design for us. And, and speaking of flexibility, uh, they have been extraordinary in, and patient and, and visionaries in imagining, uh, not the challenges, but the opportunities that come from such a site, and, and from, um, from how to blend and blur lines and, and just, I mean, they're constantly adjusting to the evolution of the thinking, and that's very, very much appreciated. I, um, I, I, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, item seven is the Student Affairs Partnership Committee report. Ms. Zerlone, again?
Of all ways, uh, my apologies.
Busy, I've been busy.
The Student Affairs Partnership Committee, we, uh, cover the twenty-fourth. Members present for Dr. Editha Silva, chair of Karen Fuss Summer, academic senate member, Minnie Lucio, community member, Abraham Wontz, student member, and Mary Montalvo, staff senate member. Mr. Doug Barrier, dean of instructional support, informed the committee at the beginning of the spring of two thousand and seven. The student union, international education, medical services, and student recreation fees will be waived for students taking all of their courses online and live outside of Cameron and Willis County. Mr. Vincent Solis, assistant vice president for student development, have a housing update and talked about phase two of housing. Currently, there are, they, they are in the architect selection stage and would like for the Student Affairs Partnership Committee to be involved in the process. Staff is currently reviewing the proposals and will make a recommendation to interview three to five firms. Student Affairs Partnership Committee will participate in the architect interview process in late November. Dr. Silva provided an update on our athletic program. The volleyball team is doing well and is poised to go to the regional tournament this year. The men's women's golf teams are competing in NAIA for the first time and are also doing well. The baseball program under Coach Varda has signed ten local athletes. He currently has a roster made up of thirty-nine student athletes, six from Puerto Rico, oh, let's see, one from Illinois, and twenty-seven from Texas. We heard from the stu-, some of the student athletes who are juniors and seniors, and they spoke about how the affiliation between university and NAIA has allowed them to continue to compete, as well as to continue with their studies on this campus. Dr. Silva further explained that the athletic program is currently funded by thirty-five percent of the student services fee, and that in order for each to grow, the athletic department and support services should be separated, which would require a new fee structure, removing athletics from student services. In general, athletic programs are funded either by use of student services fees or by a designated athletic fee. A student referendum would be required in order for the university to establish an athletic fee. I move to approve a student refer-, our student referendum to take place on November fourteenth and fifteenth, which will ask students to vote on an athletic fee of seven dollars per semester credit hour, to be in effect in the, in the fall of two thousand and eight.
And this is a non-action item, correct?
Excuse me, it is an action item. And, Dr. Silva, is here, if you have any-
They're voting to allow the referendum to occur.
And, motion made to allow the refer to occur?
Second to motion.
Taken by Mr. Sparsa, I'll favor. I'll oppose, none would care.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if the referendum is successful, um, did you finish, Ms. Zerlone?
No, I'm just, go ahead. I just, the students know about it, and they talk about it, and they are in favor of, of doing this, um, they realize what it's gonna do to them, and it is, um, is for a credit hour, seven dollars for a credit hour. And it was the cheapest, the, in this, of all the, kind of, uh, peer rules, or what rules.
Uh, the referendum is, um, will then occur in, in November, now that you all have acted on that. So it really is up to the students. This will be the third time this be-
Well, no, I was also gonna add that, well, if they approve, if they approve it, then it still must go to the legislature for them to approve it. So it's kind of, it is in our hands, but it is also in the students' heads to decide whether they want to charge themselves for it.
My packet doesn't show it's a being action item, that's why I was asking.
Oh. I, um-
I was asking about whether this was an action item, because my packet doesn't show it being an action item today. So is it-
Not action? Well, we don't-
Oh, I'm sorry, no action is necessary. We're simply, we're just simply notifying you, my, my-
So we're gonna, we're gonna retract that last vote, because this is a non-action item at this time.
Thank you, thank you. We simply did want you to know that the students were gonna have the referendum if they should be successful in the referendum, that is, if the, if the students decide that they would accept an athletics fee, then, uh, we are required to go before the state legislature and get their approval. And usually, uh, you get that if it's a local consent bill, that is, the students have already voted.
And, and we really talked about the fact that they need to come out in huge, in reach hours. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's huge, and they're gonna charge themselves seven dollars forever. It needs to be, the students need to speak out for it, or against it, I mean, whatever happens.
That's right. Um, forums are being held, there's, there's much discussion that's already been held about it, and actually, it was the students', uh, decision to finally decide to go for the referendum. And so, um, this is be the third time the students take on something like this. The first being the student union, the second being the recreation center, and now, uh, being the athletic fee. I have to tell you, though, I have never seen anything generate more interest on this campus than, um, than the recent winning volleyball team. If you have not been at those, I know many of you have been to those matches, they, they're extraordinary, they're very exciting. And, and when we beat, was it Wesleyan, they had a thirty-one game, um, winning streak until they came to UT Brownsville. And, and we did, and, we had five games scheduled that day, and, and we only had to play three, 'cause we won the first three games. Our, our women are being coached expertly, uh, and, and are just really shining in that, in that arena. You've heard about the, the golf, uh, teams that are doing very, very well, uh, as well. Uh, but the other, uh, the other part, and the baseball, of course, is getting new recruits, and, and we'll, we'll talk about them next year, we'll see. But, the, the notion of soccer being added has been an extraordinary, I mean, you'd think we'd already started it, for all of the excitement that there is about it. And so, you know, this is a, a pivotal time for the student body and for the university, and, and we, we need to make the, the decision as to whether or not this is important. Remember, one more thing, and that is that all of this came out from the Futures Commission. When we had the Futures Commission, the, 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 the part of that commission that dealt with student activities said, "We want more. We want more of everything that, that provides a more, uh, quality student life," which means everything from intramurals to competitive athletics and everything in between, dormitories and, and those kinds of things people find in the more traditional university campuses. Uh, when, when the Futures Commission made that decision, we had the first refer-, the second referendum at that point, that was for the recreation center. So this would now be, again, in response to the Futures Commission, as the community wants it, the students want it, and so now, we're simply going through the process to see if, in fact, we can make it, uh, happen. So, we're very excited about the opportunity.
Yeah, I, I just wanna add to that, it, I think it is extremely exciting that, that this is even taking place, and I'd like to commend the, the students for taking the initiative and showing, showing the leadership on, on this, on this issue. Uh, to, to think that far ahead for, for the students that are gonna be coming here in the future is, is impressive. And, and I haven't, I mean, not being on campus and getting involved with everything that's going on, or, or being able to attend that meeting, the way I've been able to keep up with this is actually the Collegian articles, and, and they're very informative, and, and I learned a lot of the, you, you kinda get a feel for the perspective that, that, that is being generated on campus, so I'd like to thank and congratulate the Collegian for, for their objective and, and positive role that they're playing in, in this effort.
Thanks. Thank you, David. Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I echo that, thank you, and also our leadership, uh, the fact our dean, and our, uh, you have done, Dr. Silva, and you all have done a wonderful job, and the people that you hired and, and enthusiasm that you give also is catching the students, and we thank you, all of us, we very appreciate it.
And we wish you luck, so, you know. So, uh, it is, it's, Dr. Silva deserves a lot of credit, Dan Huntley has, has just- Dan Huntley has just come in and turned things upside down and in a good way, has ignited all the dreams of many folks here and then started to make it happen. Vince Solis works most closely with the students and student government and the student organizations. And so it's fallen to him to kind of be the intermediary. And then now with Ronnie on the team, you can't pick up a newspaper without seeing a story about our scorpions. And I will tell you, I was at a function this last week and at our house, we had, for Kids Voting USA, folks involved. And as I went around the room and asking folks, "Tell me a little bit about yourself," what I kept hearing was, "And I'm a scorpion. And I'm a scorpion. And I'm a scorpion." And these are all teachers in the school districts or principals or in two cases, superintendents, who were claiming in a very proud way to be scorpions. And that all has bloomed in the last few years. So thank you for all the effort that you've made to get us to this point. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Item number eight now is the fourth quarter financial investment report. Ms. Silva, touches.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garcia, financial statements for the fourth quarter and the investment report have been included in your packets. They are being provided for informational purposes only and do not require any action. These statements are for the fiscal year 2005, 2006 and are closely indicative of the year-end results. However, I must advise that you, that staff is currently finalizing all year-end activity and working closely with Long Chilton to complete this process. Your audit and AFR should be complete in the December timeframe. In the investment report, total interest earned for the fourth quarter totaled $855,000. This interest is being generated through the district's various checking, savings, and CD accounts with Lone Star National Bank, Texas State Bank, and JP Morgan Chase. At this time, I'll take any questions you may have regarding the financial statements for the investment report.
Thank you, Mo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We now move on to our favorite part of the board briefing, Wayne World, Dr. Moore, Construction Report.
We have a short report tonight. The first item on the report is the construction report. We have a new interest, we're working on a new interest to the physical plant. This was required because of the location of the rec center. This road is on the other side of the armory, between the levee and the armory. It goes, as you can see, around. And then we have a new parking lot for physical plant employees and for equipment that we use at the physical plant. This project should be finished by January. We also, as you recall, you named the sculpture garden after Mr. George Truon in January. You can see there that we have the pavers in, the rain slowed us up some, we have pavers in and today arrived some new trees. They're pretty big. Abraham called me and said, "Come and look at this truck with all these trees in it." But they were unloaded today and will be planted in the next few days. They're oaks. And it's going to change the look of that. We also have some new trees at Marrosh Cardinal South Hall. We used up seven parking spaces for these trees. We don't, we didn't build a parking lot and tear down the trees. We tore down the parking lot and built the trees. That song, that old 60s song. All right, these, look how close they are to that car. That's what I, my goodness.
Checking it out.
I hope it doesn't, oh. But that's going to add some shade along a sidewalk that had absolutely no shade. And you can see that by next summer, we will have some shade trees and, or some shade there from these lovely trees. And that's going to change the look. Ms. Mendoza had to run off to class, so I'm going to report on her project, the rec center. We've had some rain, 15 days of rain, which has caused some delays. However, they were back at work today with machines and the process, once the compaction is completed, we will move to start putting piers in and doing the foundation for the rec center. So things are moving along quite well and be glad to answer any questions if you have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Dr. Garcia, your report.
I have a couple of items. First of all, you'd be, earlier tonight, you honored Victor Furo for his service and we are all grateful to Victor on many different levels. He's been extraordinary colleague to all of us and for many years. But that means that somebody has to take his place. And so I would like to announce tonight that Hector Castillo has accepted the position of assistant vice president.
I get it.
Yeah, right.
I saw it from behind you.
Hector has been with us since January 1, 1999. Before coming to UTV, life didn't exist for Hector. No, I'm sorry. There was life before us. He is a program director for the Office of Access and Equity at the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board for eight years. He's got a bachelor's degree in computer science and economics from East Texas State University and a master's degree in secondary and higher education from East Texas University. He's done postgraduate work at Colorado State University and Texas A&amp;M at Commerce. He's a doctoral student at the University of Texas at Austin in the Education Administration Department with an emphasis on community college leadership. And he has promised me that getting out of our office will enable him to finish his doctor. So now the pressure is on. It's going to affect him. It would be my pleasure to be at his commencement. Now, because Hector moves over, that means someone has to replace Hector. And so Dr. Marilyn Woods will be now... Marilyn, according to them, this all happens November 1, but I'm not sure how that's going to exactly work. I'll be told at some point. Marilyn has been with us since August the 13th, 2001, serving as assistant to the president. Before coming to UTV, Marilyn was an assistant professor in the Department of Communication at the University of Texas at Arlington for six years. Marilyn has a bachelor's degree in communication from the University of North Texas, a master's degree in interdisciplinary studies from Texas A&amp;M, University of Commerce, and a PhD in communication from the University of Oklahoma. We are very, very pleased and it was never assumed that she would accept the position and she has as executive assistant. And I'm very pleased. Thank you, Marilyn. Congratulations. Tomorrow night is a very important night for this university because we are going, the School of Health Sciences is going to host two events. First of all, well, excuse me, the event that I want to talk about tomorrow night first is the event that celebrates the 50th birthday of nursing education in the lower Rio Grande Valley. And that is just extraordinary. I mean, we're celebrating 15 years, but we're talking a little bit longer here for the nursing program. We, not we, the School of Health Sciences, the Department of Nursing, has asked if Rosemary Breedlove would allow us to start an endowment in her honor. And she has very reluctantly, but thrilled and honored, I think, accepted. And we thank you. There are many reasons for this honor that you will hear about tomorrow night, but I will just mention one. And Rosemary tires of me telling this story, except that the first time I met Rosemary Breedlove was when she came to protest in my office that we didn't have enough nursing programs on campus. And I remember thinking, "Who is this lady anyway and where did she come from?" And I said, "Well, you know, I believe you, but I'm going to have to need, I need more rationale than that." And she said, "What do you need?" And I told her, well, sure enough, a couple of weeks later, she came back with reinforcements and with all the rationale we needed. She has been a fighter for the School of Nursing, not only because of her own experience in it. She was in the first class that we did for the master's program with the University of Texas Health Science Center at San Antonio. And I was honored enough to be at her commencement that was held at the medical school in San Antonio. But beyond that, she has been a contributor in many, many different ways. Not only as a soulmate to the students and to the faculty and to the leadership there, but in gathering support from other members of the community. So on many levels, this is the right thing to do. And so we'd ask, we invite you to be with us tomorrow night as this occurs. In addition, we have an open house for all of the programs, excuse me, an open house was held this past Wednesday in the Life and Health Sciences Building courtyard. As you recall, what is happening is that every school in college is kind of being focused on for one month. And so this month is the Life and Health Sciences month. By the way, the event is at 6:00, if I didn't mention that, I'm sorry. It's at 6:00 tomorrow night and it's going to be in the courtyard of the Life and Health Sciences Building. So now going back to the anniversary itself, it was 50 years ago that the Sisters of Mercy opened the J.T. Canales Vocational School of Nursing inside the Mercy Hospital convent. And many of us who grew up here remember the stories of our parents as well about the nuns at the hospital who wore the full white garbs of the traditional Sisters of Mercy, very starched and with very strict rules about the quality of care that they were providing and about when visitors could enter and leave. They set a very high standard for the School of Nursing and one that Texas Southwest College then inherited and then proceeded to build upon. So in commemoration of that first class and the work that has been done then, we, Margarita Barradas is going to be returning. Margarita Barradas in 1968 was the first director for the newly organized School of Nursing, a vocational nursing program. And you might remember her, as some of you, in, yes, and she would be dressed with her cape, the very traditional Florence Nightingale blue cape and the white hat at her, at the commencement ceremonies for the vocational nurses. And, boy, the nurses loved to hate her and then they loved to love her forever. And so we are very honored. She is a, we've been honored, we've honored her before as one of our diamonds among us. And so she will be coming back to tell us a little bit about the history. We invite everybody to come and be part of this. Our nursing program, just in the last five years, to give you an idea of what they've been about, just in the last five years, '01 to '06, has experienced a 225 percent increase in enrollment, an incredible achievement that was, that was reached in part because of the partners that we have in the healthcare industry in our community. We acknowledge that and we thank you for that. And we'll be announcing a new goal soon for continued growth in nursing. The Bahia Grande project that we're involved with, as you know, has won an award. And so we are part of that, I guess we're the recipients of part of that award. It was nominated for the ongoing work restoring the hydrology of the Bahia Grande system and has been selected to receive a 2006 Coastal America Partnership Award for the outstanding efforts to restore and protect the coastal environment. The presentation is to be made by a Coastal America principal representative of the President of the United States, and that date will be announced later on. So when you see anybody associated with that program, our scientists in biology, members of the staff, Mary Jane Shands, the Hodgsons that have been very involved in assisting, and many, many other public agencies, the county, the state, and city and governments, it's extraordinary gift. When complete, it will be the largest restoration project or reclamation, I guess is the word, project in the United States. So it's a real privilege for us to be a small part of that great undertaking. We have Lockheed Martin on our campus and Congressman Solomon Ortiz. They were here to gift us with a centrifuge machine. The centrifuge is used to calibrate and study the performance of electronic equipment subjected to high accelerations such as those developed missiles or planes. Our professor, Dr. Guillermo Weber, is, by the way, our, I guess, our second MIT PhD living with us on campus, not so shabby for quality of faculty. But he is leading then the group in engineering and he explains, and I won't try to explain it to you exactly, but let me just read his words. "The centrifuge rotates very fast. It can drive a payload of 20 pounds and can deliver 60 times the acceleration of normal gravity. That means you can test a full electronic system and in this sense, you can say it's pretty big. It's important to have students work on a machine like this to prepare them for their futures." One of the things he explained to us was that you test instrumentation on airplanes and you test them under the most extreme circumstances to make sure that they're calibrated perfectly. Because if they're not measuring altitude or speed or velocity and many other ways, then obviously the pilot will make an error trusting the instrumentation. And so the way you simulate those extreme circumstances is through the use of something like the centrifuge. That was one example, but there are many, many other uses, I'm sure. And our stu, what's important about this is that as our students will be able to do those experiments themselves on this campus. And so it was worth over $40,000 and we, our students are now, we have over 120 students that are majoring in engineering or engineering technology and now have access to this piece of equipment along with their professors. One of the new courses that's going to be taught now, of course, is called Measurements and Instrumentation. And, you know, you can't expand your course if you don't have the lab and the equipment to do that in. So this is, this is a wonderful beginning for a partnership that we think will be very long-term with Lockheed Martin. And so we are very grateful to them for this. We're going to have, the School of Education will be hosting a guest speaker, Dr. Ramir Enrique Hamel, who's a professor of linguistics at the Universidad Autónoma Metropolitana, well, there you go, in Mexico City as part of the Scholarship of Teaching and Learning Lecture Series. That'll be on November the 9th. His presentation, Spanish-English and Multilingualism in a Globalizing World, will focus on the significance of Spanish as a language of global communication and the importance of cultural diversity and bilingual education. Dr. Hamel is a master of five languages and he's served as a visiting professor at Stanford and at the University of Santa Barbara of California in Santa Barbara and also in Brazil and in Germany. He's published extensively on the role of Spanish in English, his languages of wider communication in the Americas, and on the topic of bilingual, bilingual education. So the opportunity to have such an expert on our campus and to, and to begin to question and understand some of the issues with regards to bilingualism is extraordinary for our faculty and our students. We began, early voting has begun, as you know, and we are an early voting site on our campus. There is much work that has been done to prepare us for that, but we encourage all of you to use the precinct that is here on our campus to vote. There was a... There was a, a story, a clipping in the San Antonio Express about two weeks ago where UT San Antonio had petitioned to try to become a precinct and they were turned down by, by Bear County. Several other universities in the UT system are trying to become precincts, but we are the first to actually become a precinct. So we need to take advantage of it. Voting is important for all the reasons we all know, uh, and so you'll see us encouraging voters to come. There are parking spaces also that will be set aside close to Godvenus North so that people can come vote on campus. As I recall, at one of the last elections, we came in as the second most-used voting site, next only to the county courthouse during early voting. So, uh, we're very, very pleased to be part of that project. And of course, with the Kids Voting USA project, we've got thousands of more people, uh, involved in that. And finally, the Department of Defense informed, um, our Vice President for External Affairs today that the agency intends to award, um, two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars in a cooperative agreement to us as soon as documents are signed. The funds will be used to continue assisting small businesses and manufacturers in competitively selling their products or services to governmental agencies. Uh, the, uh, objective of the program is operated by the Valley Technical Assistance Center is to help businesses in the region expand and add jobs. They've been very successful in creating, uh, these connections between a small business and this procurement with federal contracts. And so this now gives us about two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand more dollars to continue along that road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Our proposed meeting dates for the board of trustees are as follows: November the thirtieth, December twenty-one, January twenty-fifth, February twenty-second, and March twenty-ninth.
Mr. Chairman, may I say one more thing? Herr, Dr. Garcia, we have an abysmal record for turnout for voting. Please, you don't count, your thoughts don't count, please go vote. It's early voting now, I don't care when you vote, we don't care where you vote, just go vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, any other questions? Then I'll have to move to the chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. If we go to vote, I wouldn't forget my name.